Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this meeting of the local plan, last one before Christmas. So, thank you for those that have attended. The meeting is being livestreamed and will be available to view after the meeting on the council's YouTube channel. And as ever, there are some housekeeping matters. If there is an alarm tonight, then you need to leave the old library by going through the main entrance and through the door to the left and then to the car park behind the town hall. There are no planned alarms, so if it does go off, please leave in an orderly and safe fashion. We may have a short break at 8pm, but hopefully this will be a short, efficient meeting and we can hopefully get home safely to avoid any further inclement weather that we might experience this evening. Any speakers, including all councillors, officers and visiting members of the public, please use your microphones at all times and speak directly into the microphone. And please mute all microphones when not speaking. We'll start with introductions and then we will go to the right, all the way round back and back to my left. So I'm Martin Goss, I'm Chair of Local Plan, I'm also a councillor in Milehead.
Councillor Kayleigh Ripley-Low, representing Newtown and Christchurch.
Karen Siret, Lead Officer for Planning and Place Strategy.
Bethany Jones, Principal Planning Policy Officer.
Laura Golding, Planning Policy Officer.
Councillor Patricia Moore, Mersey and Pi, Fleet Ward.
Lewis Barber, Lexington and Braeswick Ward.
Councillor William Sonnax, Rural North Ward.
Councillor Jocelyn Law, Highwoods Ward.
Sam McClain, Newtown and Christchurch.
Paul Smith, St Anthony's and Johns.
Richard Kirby-Taylor, Castle Ward.
Robert Carmichael, Democratic Services Officer.
It's also worth me pointing out that following the election in Highwoods last Friday, where two new councillors were elected, there is actually a vacancy on this committee because some of the place numbers have changed, but that will be filled for the next meeting. Obviously, a bit short notice to fill it with 24 hours' notice, but that will get dealt with. There are no substitutions under Item Two unless nobody's informed us, but everything looks to be fine. There are no urgent items under Item Three, and are there any declarations of interest that anyone needs to raise relating to any of the agenda items this evening? I'm expecting anything, but gives you all a chance. Item Five, the minutes of the last meeting, is there any items in those minutes that people disagree with? If not, I will sign them off after the meeting if everyone's in agreement. Okay, thank you. And have you have your say? We have under, well, in fact, there's two people listed. We've got Tazanam Syed and we've got Sir Bob Russell. I can't see Tazanam, so I'm assuming there is no submission. No, okay, so if she turns up, she can speak. If not, Sir Bob Russell, would you like to please take a seat and have your initial three minutes, please?
Thank you, Chairman. I had assumed the local plan committee would be discussing the local plan. But as the council no longer provides printed agendas, it's called social exclusion. And I can only guess what may or may not be on the agenda. And what disappoints me is that hearing the roll call of members, that none of them represent the south of urban Colchester, namely Old Heath or Beer Church. I don't include Newtown as big. I'm referring to the wards of Old Heath and Beer Church and Shrubend. And I had assumed there'd be a continuing dialogue about Middlewick. Because when the council made the inexplicable decision in my mind to include Middlewick in the local plan, we had councillors who are on public record as being opposed to it, but then either voted for it or abstained. And I had hoped that as with Highwoods all those years ago, the elected members would then come forward and try and save the day. Because ultimately, it's elected members who make decisions. And it may well be that because the decision is made for the local plan includes Middlewick, that's it. As far as I'm concerned, that's anything but it. The journey continues, the opposition continues. And now that the government have dropped their top-down targets on housing and noticing that Colchester is one of the fastest-growing boroughs, now cities in the country, this is a golden opportunity for the councillors of Beer Church and Old Heath in particular, but the council collectively, to see how they can retrieve the situation. Because it's quite clear, giving evidence and speaking at the public inquiry, that Middlewick should never be included in the local plan in the first place. It should not have been included in the local plan in the first place. And as this land is owned by the government and the government are saying they're going to protect green spaces, and as the government are saying they are no longer going to have top-down targets, here is an opportunity for the elected representatives of the people, the people's representatives at the town hall and not the town hall's representatives to the people, to make a stand. Highwoods Country Park would not exist if officers had had the final say. Simble Meadows Country Park would not exist if officers had the final say. This was elected councillors doing their job, representing the people and getting a good deal for Colchester. And Middlewick, Middlewick's ecological aspects trump anything you'll find at Simble Meadows or Highwoods. So I think it's time, Chairman, that councillors took back control and continued the fight that the people in South Colchester have asked you to do and save Middlewick. If the ward councillors for Beer Church and Old Heath are not going to do it, somebody else will have to do it, and I suggest it's this committee. It shouldn't be me having to come along here.
Thank you for the points raised. Obviously, the make-up of any committee would be put forwards by the groups themselves. There is a vacancy here, which obviously will be filled. I believe it's a Lib Dem group that need to fill it. But the make-up is of people qualified to serve on the committee, and obviously that's up to the groups. We don't necessarily do it on a geographical basis. Any member of the public and any councillor is welcome to attend this committee in the same way you have to raise any related matter, whether it's under Have Your Say or any agenda item. If I recall correctly, Middlewick is very much still at the beginning of the process. It hasn't been sold by the government yet, although there are noises that that does appear to be moving forwards. And of course, the master planning process is the next key stage, which involves lots of local consultation. And that is, I believe, where that currently is heading, but Karen may wish to update from a technical perspective, and I did see it is a bit unusual for councillors to come in under Have Your Say, but if councillor Sonnax has got something relevant to to say or ask, but let's let Karen speak, please.
Thank you. First of all, just in terms of the housing figures, the government haven't dropped top-down figures, what they've actually, what Secretary of State has indicated. He will retain a method for calculating local housing need figures, but will consult on changes. So, you know, there's still a target of 300,000 homes to build across the country per annum. So whilst they're going to consult on having a methodology which is the starting point and that that guide is not mandatory, there's still going to be limits to how you can deviate from that figure. And they've not just been dropped overnight, there'll be a consultation and there will be transitional arrangements put in place. In respect of Middlewick itself, I don't think councillors have dropped it at all or taken their eye off it. The ward councillors and the portfolio holder have asked us to look at what we can do there and starting with ecology in particular. And to that end, I've had a couple of meetings with Natural England and we've sent them a brief to look at, to actually commission them to do some work. So that's what's happening there.
Councillor Sonnax, is this relevant or is it a comment or a question related to what Sir Bob Russell has said, please?
It is related to what Bob, and I'm sorry for speaking out of order, but I think I can contribute to this. Those councillors who voted for the plan, which included me, were voting for a plan, not for a site. And we were very, very conscious of pages of conditions on that site. And the council now needs to be making very clear when inquiries, if the Ministry of Defence put it on the market, and I don't know quite where it is, and inquiries come into the council, we need to be making it very, very clear that we need the transport dealt with, we need the acid grasslands dealt with, we need the whole list of things dealt with. And that should be the stance we're taking. We shouldn't be trying to find solutions for the developers. We should be making it clear that they need to provide the solutions if it's going to go. I think that's a useful stance.
Yep, thank you, councillor Moore.
Thank you. It is related to what Sir Bob was saying. Having read Michael Go's letter and the suggestions in there, what hopefully is going to happen, and it wasn't clear to me exactly whether a plan that has already been made can be adjusted to the new climate or whether it's only those people who have not yet made their local plan. And it would be, I think it would be very useful if we could have an agenda, have an item on the agenda very soon, so that we could actually discuss whether these new suggestions are going to affect our local plan and whether, particularly, I noticed that he was saying those those communities that have over-supplied in the past will be treated very leniently. Things like this, which make us make us quite interested. So it would be nice to know whether they really will affect us or whether it's just warm words. So if we could have an agenda item sometime soon, it would be very good. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. I agree. I think we've seen words and pictures from government before. The picture's probably mean more than the words and there is no change and, you know, we all still get affected by high housing numbers, but I'm sure Karen will come back on that point.
Yes, the Secretary of State's letter says that there'll be a consultation out by Christmas. So what I suggest is that we bring that to the next committee if we've got time, which will set out the changes and give us the opportunity to comment on those suggested changes. If there isn't time, because they only allow a certain number of weeks, then what we will do, it will be to be a portfolio holder response, but we'll circulate it to members with a briefing note in advance, so that you get the opportunity to comment.
Yeah, and it's strange how it comes out just before Christmas, isn't it, or at Christmas, and will get forgotten over that period, not obviously by us. Sir Bob Russell, you've got another minute, one comment. I will make a paper agenda is available. It was printed, but with the change of room, it wasn't brought down, but it has been so point noted. If you've got any response, you have another minute.
Chairman, my thanks to councillors and the officer for their contributions. At least there's been a discussion about Middlewick tonight, which is what I wanted, and you have my assurance, I shall come back to every meeting in the local plan because this issue will not go away as long as I'm still alive. And it should not be built on, it's as simple as that. And I'm looking to elected representatives of the people to take the lead to prevent it happening. And I would suggest that this committee writes the Member of Parliament for Colchester and asks that he makes representations to the government to see how Middlewick can be removed from being built on, because they own the land. The government own the site. They withdraw the land from sale, it won't be built on. It's a simple letter to the MP asking him that very point. Problem solved.
Thank you. Right, that was all about Have Your Say speakers. We'll move on to Item Seven. Laura Golding to take us through the annual monitoring report. Thank you.
Thank you. The committee has asked to approve the Authority Monitoring Report, known as the AMR, for the period April 2021 to March 2022, and agree it's being published on the council's website as a record of its delivery and extent to which the council's policies have been put into effect. There is no longer requirement to submit an AMR. However, there are still statutory duties to monitor performance and it makes sense for the council to maintain a consistent statistical record. Compiling the AMR involves assistance of a number of teams, including Development Management, Economic Development, Housing Strategy, Neighbourhood Services and Community Services. For that reason, the report provides a good statistical portrait of Colchester. The AMR measures progress on the adopted local plan for the monitoring period, which was the Section One Culture Local Plan and Core Strategy. For completeness, we have included an update on progress of the Culture Local Plan, which falls outside of this monitoring period. The Section Two Culture Local Plan was adopted by full council on the 4th of July 2022. Next year's AMR will be updated to reflect the monitoring framework of the new Culture Local Plan. Key findings of this year's AMR include: the first phase of population data from the 2021 census was released in June 2022. The population size of Colchester increased by 11.3% from 173,100 in 2011 to 192,700 in 2021. Tendering Colchester Board and Garden Community Development Plan Document, known as the DPD, consultation commenced on the 14th of March 2022 and ran for six weeks until the 25th of April 2022. The West Mersey and Marks Bay neighbourhood plans were adopted in March 2022. Other neighbourhood plans have continued to progress during and outside of the monitoring period, including Tipperary and Cophord with ESOP, which progressed to examination stage in October 2022. The total number of planning applications received in this monitoring period is 1,982, which is an increase on last year's total of 1,535. This figure, however, does not include all applications, i.e. discharge of conditions and preliminary inquiries. A net of 1,034 dwellings were built between the 1st of April 2021 and the 4th of July 2022. This is higher than the previous year's total of 741 and above the objectively assessed needs target of 920 dwellings a year for Colchester. A total of 117 affordable homes have been delivered during the monitoring period. This includes 45 new board affordable housing units consisting of 29 affordable rent, six social rent and 10 shared ownership. Outside of Section 106, the council's development company, 72 affordable units have been delivered through the council's acquisitions programme. The council have taken on additional area of 5,638 metres squared of open space during the monitoring period. This open space is across two sites, Barton Boulevard and Northfields. The council were successful in a further bid to Deprive for over £243,000 to carry out Phase Two of the Careless Pollution Campaign, carry out a home burning campaign to raise awareness of the health impacts of particular matter and to introduce shared transport schemes, including two electric car club cars and two e-bike e-cargo bike hubs to encourage travel behaviour change. Thank you.
Thank you for that very efficient and swift walk through the numbers. Are there any comments or questions relating to this annual report, please? Okay. Councillor Kirby-Taylor and then councillor Sonnax, please.
Very quickly, the report notes that there were no loss to key community facilities. Does that include the loss of things like Roller World or will that be captured in this coming years? And are the loss of that type of facilities included?
Yeah, so that would, if it was a loss, would be in the next AMR. But I'm not sure, Karen, would that be included? It would.
It probably would, assuming it's put to another non-community use. We wouldn't necessarily distinguish between community uses. So we'd have to wait and see, unfortunately.
Thank you, councillor Sonnax, please.
Yes, I thought it was a very useful report. And it's interesting, it's not statutorily required, it seems required, it seems to be a useful thing to have and it's a definitive record of what we've done and what we've not done. 1,024 homes is a lot and we've seen the total numbers, we're just way ahead of the rest of Essex. And it's this flywheel effect on our targets and then we're just building and building and building. And I don't think the infrastructures keep keeping up. And, you know, this, again, we've collected 2,300 in Section 106 contributions. Out of that gives you somewhere around 2,300 a home. The amount you could collect per home goes up to about 19,000, I think I've seen in one application, one refused application, that it was about 19,000 a home that was asked for. It wasn't got because the application was refused on appeal. If you look at the Essex County Council Contribution Guide, it should be about 9,600 or something like that per home. And part of the difference is because a lot of the contributions go to other authorities like Essex County Council, but there's just a feeling about this that we're not collecting enough. If I can go on to some other points, Chair. The, one of the interesting things was the number of windfall houses that we got. And this seems to be a matter of sadness to the planners, but I think for the community, if the houses, smaller developments that can be done without upsetting neighbours and done in the villages and around the towns, I think that's nothing but good. So we'd be celebrating the windfall and trying not to stop it, but just to make it work. The number of planning applications going up by so many, I do wonder, I know our planning department's stretched. And I don't know how the incentives work within it or what the culture is within it, but it does seem that we're asking for too many applications. And I've seen quite often applications in relation to permitted use, that probably where you probably don't need an application. I wonder whether we're encouraging applicants where there's doubt to put in an application and busying ourselves more than we need to be. Maybe we should take a slightly more relaxed attitude and let the permitted use do what it's meant to do. Going on, I think we were told that we got 117 affordable houses out of over 1,000 houses built. That's 11% affordable and our policy is 30%. And I feel we should be pushing harder on that. And I would very much like to know how many applications have been driven to actually looking at an appraisal to see whether it is affordable or not. That would be a really useful statistic to know. And I think those are my main points, but the general one is, the most, the overall point is that we're letting the, we're building loads of houses, we're not, the infrastructure isn't keeping up. That infrastructure report or infrastructure deficit report is really, really important. A little birdie told me that the funding for that might have been cut. So I guess my last question is, has the funding been cut? And if it has, what are we going to do about this? What is the administration going to do about this huge infrastructure deficit we're looking at?
So Karen's making notes and I'll let her cover any salient points.
Okay, I was scribbling down, but councillor Sonnax will have to come back to me if I miss anything out. As a point of clarification, I think Chelmsford are currently building more per annum than us, certainly over the last couple of years, but I would agree, they've got an awful lot of catching up to do because their delivery was very low for a number of years. Windfall certainly comes in very handy sometimes, so certainly. Should it be celebrated? There's certain ones that can be celebrated, I think. Not everyone thinks they're a good thing, especially, I suspect, those people where they're next door to a site, but they can be a good thing, definitely, especially in villages. Planning application numbers going up, I think we'll find this year they've probably evened back out again. We certainly wouldn't encourage applications if we don't need them for the very reason that you said, you know, resources are certainly stretched. The affordable housing policy is for 30% and delivery last year was disappointing, I think it's fair to say. But there's a number of reasons for that. First of all, there is a time lapse between houses being built out and getting permission. So the 30% policy only came in to being in the last year. So any sites that are being built out prior to that plan are probably being built out at 20% or even less. We also only seek affordable housing on sites that are above 10 dwellings or five dwellings in designated rural areas, which means there's a large proportion of sites where we can't actually seek affordable housing at all, and that's because of a national policy saying that. The funding for the infrastructure study is likely to be given up as part of the, you know, dealing with the financial situation that the council finds itself in. Officers will, however, carry out that initial work. And we've already spoken to people like the health body, we've had a couple of meetings with them. So it may take longer, but I think we can still do some of that initial work. Then, you know, finances might be different, the government might be offering some support for councils. They talk in the Secretary of State's letter, for example, about supporting councils with design. They talk in the Secretary of State's letter, for example, about supporting councils with design work so that we can build beautiful. So it'll be interesting to see how, what comes out of that. But we certainly want a better picture of infrastructure across the city.
Thank you for that. We've got other councillors to call on. So we've got councillor Smith next, then we've got councillor Rippingdale, then we've got councillor Barber in that order, please.
Thank you. Yes, I'm interested to counter Sunnix's points because I too share his concerns about the lack of social housing. But equally, I'm aware that, for example, the windfall sites would never attract any units of social housing and that we did have a policy which would enable more social housing. But central government changed the policy and removed the restraints on the smaller sites. And they also said and instructed planning inspectors that if the only thing that was stopping a site being approved was the amount of social housing, then the social housing had to go. And that's caused, I think, a great deal of problems because when you look at the figures in the report, the house prices are going up, two hundred and twenty odd thousand for the bottom quartile price. That's not affordable for anyone on a single salary in Colchester unless they're earning somewhere the region of forty or thousand pounds a year. And that's nearly twice the median salary in Colchester. So we do have a serious problem with housing in culture to provide for our own people. And I also note in the report that actually Braintree is producing more houses in the past two years than Colchester in section six point one O. And so it's not just Colchester that's suffering from these problems. All of the neighbouring areas are seeing high levels of growth and how some of these councils, which were showing seventeen percent growth are coping when we've been dealing with ten and eleven percent is clearly worrying. And I think the report was very useful. There was an issue, though, with the use of abbreviations. It took me an awful long time to find out what Rams was. I did find it eventually. I'm still quite intrigued as to why we're giving money for Rams to Chelmsford when it's something to do with coastline. And as far as I'm aware, we have coastline and Chelmsford doesn't really have that much, but I'm sure there's some good reasons for that. But generally, I think the report shows a lot of good sense. But it does highlight, and I'm grateful for councillor Sunnix to highlight, the real problems on the lack of social housing being delivered.
Thank you. Any response to any of those points? If not, we'll move on. It would be worth covering the Rams piece, actually, I think, because I did pick up on that and wondered why we're giving seventy five million pounds away.
Seventy five million?
Oh, no, seventy five pounds. Oh, no, sorry.
You wouldn't have any financial.
No, no, I was gonna say, right kids.
Um, I might ask Beryl Laura just to comment if they, if there's anything to add. But in terms of Rams, it's simply that Chelmsford volunteered to be the sort of governing body. They have got a small amount of coastline and are within the zone of influence where Rams payments are made. Most of Essex is actually, I think Utlesford and maybe a bit of Epping or something might fall with outside, but they they're just accountable body for um the money, really just centralising it. But in terms of affordable housing, I did just want to mention one of the schemes where we've actually achieved the thirty percent affordable housing and then at the Cowdray Centre for Simon were a pilot for the government's first homes programme. And whilst this council opposed first homes in principle, it is a policy. It is an affordable tenure and it offers discounted housing for sale. And it was a success for first ten units. So I think they're now looking to increase that. So actually, if it can help people get on or move up the housing ladder and free up other social housing, then, you know, that might be a good thing.
So could I just clarify on first homes? That scheme is not restricted to people living in Colchester, is it? So somebody who doesn't live in Colchester could use the first home scheme to buy a property in Colchester. Whereas, for example, on our social housing, there are requirements for you to show a link to Colchester, whereas theoretically someone from London, for example, could buy one of those very nice properties, very convenient for the railway station. And it would count as an affordable home delivered in culture, though actually it wouldn't help culture people at all.
Yeah, I mean, out of the ten that were delivered there, nine went to local people already residing in Colchester. So I think that's really promising. And what they've suggested with the second tranche is that they would market them um with a sort of local eligibility criteria in the first instance and then cascade it. I think they said to Tendrining and Braintree or, you know, certainly just Colchester, then slightly further out and then further out than that. But hopefully it will be attractive to local people.
And hopefully built around the right way, if you remember the press about that site. Anyway, needn't say anymore. Councillor Rippingdale is next, please.
So thank you for this report. It's really quite a fascinating read. And we noted that there was one thousand nine hundred and sixteen empty properties or cast as empty for council tax purposes. And are those all residential? And why does Colchester Borough Council, CCC now, have one hundred and twenty five properties owned that are empty? Given that we have a huge amount of people on our housing register. And is there any mechanisms for us to force those properties back into rental use or to be sold? And I just think that's quite a lot of properties that are empty that could be utilised to house families that are on our register and in desperate need of larger, larger homes.
Yeah, the vast majority of those are short term, are empty short term or have been a thousand and eight out of the nineteen hundred. And only one hundred and twenty five of the total number of CBC owned. So there's CBH certainly have performance indicators which measure the length of time properties are empty. So they are assessed against that. And I think, you know, there's an emphasis to get those back into use for obvious reasons as quickly as possible. We have less control, of course, over privately owned properties. And, you know, sixty two properties have been empty for five plus years, which you do wonder how that can happen. Interestingly, there's one round the corner for me and that's probably been empty over five years. And I saw last week that they'd started work refurbishing it. So hopefully that will come back into use. But you do wonder why they're not. But probate and things like that, in my experience, can often cause problems.
Yep, sure.
So my understanding is that any CBH properties have to be relet or come out of void within thirty days. So is this one hundred and twenty five we're saying is under the six months or are they undergoing major works, which means that they're out of action because of poor maintenance? That's what I'd be interested about.
We would have to get back to you on that level of detail, but happy to ask them about that. And if the committee would like to know, we'll circulate that answer to everyone.
Now, I think a couple of points, having been through a number of these reports over the last ten fifteen years, the figures on empty properties tend to be similar. It's always been around that figure. And of course, as a council, we cannot force people to bring those properties back into occupation. Obviously, the CBH figures again have always, there's always been some empty properties, but a lot of that is down to vandalism. And and issues that the property needs to have maintenance done to it. And obviously, we don't want to put people in properties that are not fit for purpose, frankly. But CBH does have to publish those figures and we'll make sure they're circulated. Next councillor to speak will be councillor Barber, then it's councillor Moore.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Laura, for your report and presentation. I wanted to ask about the projected employment land use and whether we as an authority are going to review that. Because I I find it probably slightly difficult to believe that now if we conducted the same study or whoever did it on our behalf, we'll conclude that office space would be as fast growing as perhaps it is. I remember when we were discussing the garden communities, I often would laugh at the idea that people would be working from home and now I work from home half the time. So given the change in working patterns since this was conducted in January twenty sixteen, I wonder if if we as an authority are going to review that in any time in the near future. Because it just seems a bit outdated, given today's practices. Thanks.
Yeah, it's a good point and a good question. And no doubt in ten years' time, it'll all change back the other way. Anyone like to pick up on that point, Karen?
I think it's mainly about land and premises being available to make sure that there's choice in the marketplace. And we'll revise that next time we review the local plan.
Thank you. Councillor Moore, please.
Thank you. I had two questions. I suspect they're probably more appropriate for item eight, but one was the mention of Rams because my question was going to be Rams, I think. And also about the funding of for the NHS. I think, I think, will you agree with me that this is better into the, in the next section?
Yes, I think so. Okay, thank you. Any other points or questions? If not, councillor Sunnix again.
Yes, just going back on on two things. I feel there's two areas we need to push harder. We need to push with more determination on this infrastructure point. Just looking at the figures, over the last seven years, we are the biggest producer of housing in the area. And it's accumulated deficit over that period that we need to look at. So we need to really push. And I've asked the administration, I don't know the right forum for doing this, but I'd ask the administration, what are they doing about that deficit? What are their plans? We've heard that they want social housing. Well, we all want more social housing. It takes me an hour to drive here in the evening with the A one twenty in the roads. And it takes, and we're hearing of ambulance stacked, ambulances stacked up outside the hospital. We all know, everyone knows that we're running behind on this and it doesn't seem to be on the agenda enough. The other thing where I feel we need to push harder is on the section one O six, where I'd really be interested to know how many appraisals we've actually, how many developments we've actually driven to appraisals. How often are we actually getting down to it and really probing whether they could bear more social housing there? I suspect we could get a few more or quite a lot more if we pushed a little bit harder on them.
Okay, thank you, Karen.
Yeah, well, of course, the A one twenty is the responsibility of National Highways. There were, were plans, where has twice been a preferred route, but it's not progressed at this stage. We we remain hopeful, I think, it's all I can say there. And hospital, you know, we do collect funding when the NHS requests it. And that is only for large sites. They don't request funding for smaller sites. And hospitals, you know, I did hear on the news this morning Stephen Barclay saying money was being made available for forty new hospitals, which might help the situation. I don't think we're looking for a new hospital, but some improvements to or funding towards what we've got. I think health colleagues would say one of the biggest problems is staffing and attracting people to work in the health facilities, which, you know, we can't do anything about through section one O six, unfortunately. And the other point, oh, what was the other point? Oh, appraisal, sorry. We haven't been doing many lately, it's fair to say, because of the stage the local plan was at. We expect people to meet all the policy requirements and may have been doing so. So we haven't had to go down that route lately. We did in the past, but I wouldn't know where to start looking for, you know, how many we actually did do over the years, but that's the situation.
Okay, thank you for that. And of course, the NHS across the whole of the UK is under huge pressure. So it isn't just Colchester Hospital. All hospitals are certainly under pressure. And in fact, Good Morning Britain this morning was broadcasting from a hospital on those very points and staffing is a huge issue. And in fact, I have a family member that's in, is quite ill in Colchester Hospital at the moment and staffing is a huge problem there for their care. So, you know, this is a huge problem on staffing. You can have all the buildings you want. But if you've got nobody in them qualified to actually give the healthcare delivery, that's where there's a huge problem. But that's a bigger question and a bigger debate, not for this particular committee, I think. So unless there's any other points, we've been asked under point two point one to approve the twenty twenty one to twenty two Authority Monitoring Report for publication on the council's website. Is everybody happy and in agreement that this report is of very good quality for it to be published? Yep, thank you, everybody. That was a good set of points and some good challenges. So we'll now fast forward to page eighty nine, which is the next report. And that is item eight. And I believe, Karen, are you taking us through this one? So this is the infrastructure funding statement, known known as an IFS, if we're going to talk about acronyms this evening.
Thank you. This is an annual statement which details amounts of section one O six agreed, received, held and spent in the monitoring period, which, like the AMR, this year covers the period first of April twenty one to the thirty first of March twenty two. Examples are provided in various sections of the section one O sixes. The headline figures, as you might have seen in or on the Gazette website, can be misleading. The fact that, you know, nine million pounds is sitting there unspent. Well, actually, much of that is already allocated to specific projects because section one O six agreements, particularly in recent years, have to be very precise. It may not be possible to spend money as it comes in because often on larger schemes, the money is phased. And for example, I was looking at one in Stanway recently and the community contribution of six hundred and eighty thousand was phased into free payments as the development progresses. From memory, the the government introduced a clause saying that we had to have agreement to introduce things prior to commencement, which not everyone is happy with, but it's intended to help with cash flow. And that headline figure also includes money which has been sought for long-term maintenance. So for areas of open space that, for example, that the council maintains, we will seek a contribution to maintain that land over a long period of time. So that money is sitting there as well. So, as I say, they're certainly a lot more committed than that headline figure indicates. But if members have any questions, I will try to answer them.
I'm going to take chairman's privilege and go first, and then we'll have councillor Moore. Colchester used to be a leading authority on section one O six. We used to train other authorities on how to collect the money and spend it. Are we still doing training or liaison with other councils in best practice? Or do you think we've trained enough of them that they're all doing a better job than they were?
Well, that was actually training on a database rather than the processes of monitoring and collection. And the person who, you know, we should really credit with developing that database left the council and he now provides that training for other councils as a private training provider. So that's where that element has gone.
Okay, obviously still very good. Councillor Moore was first, I believe. We've also got councillor Rippingdale and I think councillor Barber as well. So we'll go Moore, Barber and Rippingdale if we may.
Thank you. My questions, not so much about the collective. Thank you. Uh, my questions are not so much about the collecting of the money, but actually the use of the money, um, which um, I have some doubts over. The first thing is about the um, the NHS contributions. I my I saw how much money had been had been raised by the Riley paddocks um, development. And that is destined to go to the NHS presumably for local use. But in fact, in Mersey, the doctors refused to even contemplate having a new surgery. Um, and that money, how long can that money just sit there unused? Or at some point will have to be handed back. The other thing is that I noted that some money raised, one oh six money raised on an Abboton development has got diverted to Mersey. And again, why? When it's going to be very difficult to spend it in Mersey unless somebody can come up with some um, innovative idea like a cottage hospital or something, which would be absolutely splendid. But at the moment, the doctors are, they're just digging their heels in and won't. You know, well, unless they're going to have a whole thing given, built and given to them, they don't need, they don't, they don't want to play. So that's money that is is just sitting there unused. So I'd like to have um, your opinions on that. The other thing is about Rams. Now, I did, when I, when Rams was first invented, I did attend the um, session which described it in detail, where it was coming from, where it was going to, who was paying into it and who um. And the idea was that there were going to be, it is for mitigating the potential damage to the coastline caused by development, hence the extra tax on each dwelling that is built. But what it was going to be spent on seemed incredibly ephemeral. Um, but there was talk of having a warden, a warden, I think, or maybe two for the entire Essex coast. Has this warden even materialized? What has happened to all that money that is being taxed off developers and house builders? Um, the whole, I've I've been against the the thing in all the way along because I thought it was merely a tax and it was meant to look good, but it won't actually do any good. This is, I'm somebody who lives literally two hundred yards from the water. So. Yeah, I would like to certainly like to know. Yeah, I think those are two, it was the health, what what's going to help happen to the money raised for the NHS? If the doctors won't spend it, um, and why should Abbotton money go to Mersey? When a lot of those people go to the surgery, in fact, at Fingeringhoe, which is a much more active and go ahead. And it's got, they've got a nice little clinic there. I mean, I I mean, although I'm a Mersey councillor, I'm also an Abboton councillor and Abboton are very upset that money has been diverted away from them to go to Mersey. Um, yeah, if you could, if I could have some comments on on that, please.
Okay, uh, Karen, I'm not sure we'll be able to answer the detail and all those things because some of that might be up to the NHS to answer. But Karen, if you can answer what you can from those those two um, questions, please.
Yeah, certainly. I mean, each planning application is looked at on its merits and each section one oh six um, is quite specific in terms of how long there is to spend the money and where exactly it's spent. What I would say is that we are very much reliant on consultees telling us um, where that money should be spent. So if the health body said um, Mersey, thinking that they were going to get a new surgery in Mersey. And like councillor Moore, I've been waiting for that since I joined the council twenty years ago. I think that was one of my first jobs to identify a site in Mersey and several sites have been identified. But um, it's not progressed beyond that. So I can share your frustration with that one. Um, so we are guided by others in terms of uh, health and um, specific one oh six clauses. In terms of the Rams, I mean, this isn't something we made up as a tax on developers. And I challenged it through to the department because I thought um, you know, we couldn't hold up every planning application because of this. We took legal advice. Um, and it came back that we did have to impose um, a requirement that each new dwelling makes a contribution. So this is delivered through Bird Aware Essex Coast, which is an initiative to raise awareness of the birds um, on the Essex coast. They have appointed um, this overall manager and the intention was, you're right, to um, appoint two wardens for for the whole of the um, coastline. And I've actually got a photo up and it does show three people. So I'm thinking that might be the manager plus the two wardens. Um, I'm just having a look. Yeah, our rangers, rangers rather than wardens, talked to coastal visitors, raising awareness and appreciation of the incredible wildlife and protected habitats along the coast. So, yes, those um, wardens or rangers do appear to be in place now.
Thank you, councillor Barber.
Thank you, thank you, uh, Karen. Um, on this particular matter, on on section one oh six, I'm never entirely sure the extent of, uh, I guess, the democratic democratic oversight on the decisions. Because sometimes I get forms to sign off um, from officers and sometimes uh, we just know there's money uh, being spent. So I was just wondering if you were able to set out some of the some of the processes where it might require signing and where it doesn't, because I'm never entirely sure exactly when I'm going to be asked to sign something off of my agreement. I I picked up on the Gazette article about the nine and a half of million pounds unspent. And I felt that was a pretty misleading headline. It made it seem as if they were agreements that had lapsed and we'd lost the money, which I think was regrettable because um, there's a lot of ongoing work, for instance, in my area, where speaking to officers trying to deliver projects. Uh, but it might be useful, I guess, if it's not too onerous and it might be, in which case it's not the end of the world. If it wasn't too onerous, maybe giving a breakdown of how that money might be spent to see what projects we can help with as members to drive that balance uh, balance down. So there's less money uh, unallocated. And so I I think the start is just if I could have a general understanding of when I might be asked to be more involved than not. Because sometimes Lucy Morden's dealing with an application in my division, uh, rather than my borough ward. And the engagement is extensive and and incredible. She's doing fantastic work in the engagement side. Um, but there's certain examples where I can think of, and I certainly won't um, reference them in public or anything. But where I think, well, why didn't we get engagement earlier on? So I I just like some doing, but broadly as well, understanding. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. I mean, I can help with the signing off pieces. Obviously, I've done quite a few over the years. And you are right, we tend to get asked as ward councillors to sign off the ward spend. And I think if the, if I remember the policy correct, where there are quite substantive contributions, particularly around sport and leisure and things like that, sixty five percent of that goes into the central pot. So if Leisure World's roof blew off, we would see if there's any money in the central pot to pay for a new roof on Leisure World, but that might have come from Stanway, Mile End, et cetera. And thirty five percent of that is left in Highwoods Mile End or whatever the applications relate to. And if, for instance, um, in Mile End, we've used a lot of section one oh six money to regenerate playgrounds. So Burgolt Road is a good example where a good slug of that came from section one oh six. And then some of that came from grant funding, where there was match funding from the National Lottery and places like that. That takes quite a lot of time and energy to pull together eighty or ninety grand to redo a playground. And on those contributions, we would have signed those off on the central pots where Leisure World's roof might need replacing. We wouldn't be signing those off because it's in a central pot. And that would have come from wards all over Colchester, if that helps. Um, I'm sure the officers probably got much more detail, but that that's my own understanding and experience of of um, signing stuff off. But you're absolutely right. I do agree with you. Sometimes you do get random requests, particularly from parks, where they might go, we need seven hundred pounds from this section one oh six um, contribution because we need to go and make some repairs to some bollards in Highwoods Country Park or this playground. We need to part fund it. So you might get a very small section. What tends to happen, particularly on smaller applications, is you might have a pot here and a pot there. And what the officers cleverly do is stitch that together to then use that to make some um, investment into playgrounds or open space. And that's where you might have to sign off um, some funding from a number of smaller applications. Again, that's what I've had to do in the past. Um, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add to that, but that's my understanding of how it works in simplistic terms and, you know. So I hope that helps, um, Karen, and then councillor Moore after that.
Yeah, thank you. The sixty five thirty five percent split is the other way around. So try and retain the biggest amount in the locality because it is about mitigating development in that area. Um, the whole spend release process is being reviewed because, you're right, it does seem to be a bit hit and miss. So um, we're looking at that at the current time. And um, I can't remember if you mentioned Abbotton or um, it certainly certainly councillor Moore did. And I meant to respond to you and something Lewis said prompted me to go back to that. Abbotton Parish Council might be up in arms, but they need to let us know. And this goes out to all ward councillors to, for you to let us know, but also to advise your parish um, and town councils to let us know. If an application is in, what local infrastructure is required to mitigate the development? Because, you know, you've all got, or they have the local knowledge. So we are partly reliant on that. And again, that's another process which is being reviewed. But and you'll probably recall this time last year, we sent an email out to everyone asking for that sort of information. And we'll be doing the same again. So um, that's really important if you can feed those messages back because we didn't hear back from many parish councils. And, you know, if we can get those um, lists upfront, then that can be supplemented when actual individual applications come in as well.
I think, um, we'll bring councillor Moore in a second. I think one of the other questions councillor Barber mentioned or points he raised was just about maybe a split down of the money. Um, et cetera. But I don't, I don't know if you'll have that to hand. That might be something you have to take offline unless you're so good. You've got it, you've got it in your back pocket somewhere. Um, okay, um, thanks for that. And then councillor Moore, you just wanted to make a point, I think.
Oh, thank you. Just coming back to the Abbott, those two things that come back to the Abbotton thing. The decision to divert some of that money to Mersey was a very last minute. It was an application by a West Mersey Town Councillor who pointed out, who said that, oh, well, some of those people from there will go to the Mersey surgery, therefore we need the money. Um, uh, and it really, it was a yeah, it was a bit of a sideswipe because Abbotton had already, you know, they they, the money was going to come to them as far as they were concerned. So it 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 took them unawares a bit, so that happening. The um, oh, the quick, the quick, I think I asked the question. If I didn't, I apologize. How long this this NHS money, if it is not spent, how long does it remain available? Or at some point they must say, oh, well, you know, the developer's going to have it back. What what is the timescale on this?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't make it clear. What I did say in my replies, each clause um, is bespoke. So I can't say if it's not spent within five years or ten years or fifteen years. It varies greatly across um, agreements. So it's um, some are really quite old, but we've gotten some more recent ones. Then we get pushed for a shorter spend period. But often we'll introduce a cascade mechanism so we don't lose that money, but it can be diverted.
So a really hot example or a good example of a section one oh six agreement is where we had, uh, we didn't, it was Essex County Council had millions of pounds stored up for a decade from the Garrison Development to redo the roundabout and and the area around Queen Street. And they ran out of time or time was running out. So they had to renegotiate with Taylor Wimpy. Because in theory, by law, Taylor Wimpy could have taken the millions of pounds back and put it back into their balance sheet and into their profit and loss and paid it to shareholders. Um, and that was dealt with, I think. Um, and and they did agree um, that that actually, yeah, maybe longer term, they should leave the money um, to for infrastructure. But in theory, by law, they can have that money back unless they agree to it. And um, as an example, over in Highwoods many years ago, in Maximus Drive, where there was some money for a playground, only about twenty grand. And the residents didn't want the playground and the developer wanted the money back. So we managed to do a split of fifty fifty where the money could be spent on something else, but then the developer got the rest of it back, plus the interest. So it does depend on the developer's attitude. But I think um, in those conversations, we can point out strategically, it wouldn't look good. Um, I think, um, councillor Rippingdale and then councillor Sunnix. So I know you've been waiting, Kayleigh, so apologies.
It's okay, I'll let you off. Um, I think it is important to note that we as councillors should be taking more ownership of this. I am, poor Karen has been subjected to me and councillor Cox for the last six months, you know. I think what I identified with Karen is there is a distinct lack of training for new councillors. There's been, I say, twelve new members now that have joined the council since last May. And none of us have received any section one oh six training. So we've very much been feeling our way to understanding what can be spent and where. And so you had pre-notification of this. So I've asked for um, a training to be rolled out for all members so that we can understand where this money can be spent. So therefore, the emphasis isn't on planning department who are overstretched for us to take ownership of our money. And I will state, though, that the reporting isn't, is not easy for newbies to understand. As you said, some of this money's already been allocated. And I don't feel that that's entirely clear in the reporting for anyone who isn't up with planning and understanding section one oh six contributions, which I assume a lot of us aren't. And so I think that training will be key to understanding that report as well so that we can ensure this money is spent, especially in times now where funding is difficult to come across and our communities need more and more from us. And I suppose the other question I would have is that in that training, our couns, the councillors are also made aware that um, uh, other funding opportunities that could be match funded to surplus the one oh six money as well. I think a lot of people think that that has to be spent standalone. And and as you found from our conversations, that's very much not the case. Um, and there are, there's lots of external funding, especially in youth provisions that could be used. So um, it would be great to hear whether we could get a an education session in for all members within this year, especially for the new members who haven't had any.
I think in terms of training, that's really for, I think, Richard to take away as Democratic Services and add that excellent, even better.
Hot off, hot off the press.
Very good, but that.
Hold the seventh and the twenty first of February.
That's because I went to my briefing.
Brilliant. That's fantastic. And then that could become an annual or or whatever training session as as induction for new councillors. So that's very good. But Democratic Services will roll that into the programme um, of training, of which there's numerous training programmes on all sorts of subjects nowadays. Can't actually fit them all in the diary. Um, any other points that you wanted to just respond to councillor Rippingdale on, please?
Yeah, just to say, we have um, been trying to arrange some other training as well, planning training. So Richard sent me those two dates and we'll cover planning enforcement in one as well because that's another one the committee asked about some time ago. But as you say, it's been such a busy year, finding slots available to have the training has been really difficult. Um, so that is in hand and a good point. And um, in terms of the reporting not being clear, I'll add that to um, look at as part of the whole review of section one oh six because I think you're right, you get the monthly um, reporting. And um, it would help if that was broken down a bit, wouldn't it? Yeah.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
I'll take that away.
Councillor Sunnix, uh, you're next, please.
Sorry, I don't want to speak too much. Um, on this training point, uh, the idea that we're training other councils. Um, I've been on the other end of other councils, of London Borough's um, section one oh six negotiation process. And it was extremely thorough. I've also been to a very good course and I can't remember who it's run by. on how, how councils can more strongly negotiate section one O six. And that's why I'm getting a lot of these ideas from. And I have to say that, looking at these reports, I really feel sorry for officers. This is the most, this is the most complicated thing. Every agreement is slightly different. There are councillors going in trying to wangle contributions for their own pet schemes. There's all the match funding going on and a slim team of officers is having to try and sort it out. The solution is to try and make the pots bigger so that we've got more, so that there's more discretion about where about how it's used, so there's more flexibility, so we're not tied up so much. And try and make the payments and, I mean, getting some section one O six money for a playground was just a complete nightmare in, 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 in great day, for everyone, it was a nightmare. And rarely, you know exactly where I'm going. The biggest pot of all is to have a sill. That's where sill or whatever replaces sill and they're always saying they're going to change it. They've been saying they're going to change it for years, so we shouldn't take them too seriously. And the first step to doing the sill, and again, it's repeating myself, is that infrastructure report. I don't think it's fair to put too much pressure on officers on this. I feel we should be putting pressure on the administration. And my question is, when is the moment to put, probably not at a local planning committee, how do we put pressure on the administration to pay attention to the most important point for Colchester, which is getting our infrastructure caught up?
Well, the easy answer to that is you can either ask that at full council of councillor Luxford Vaughan, as the councillor in charge of planning. And you could also ask it at cabinet. So whenever the next meeting comes up, you can ask that question. I think the next cabinet meeting will be January. So you could come along to that and ask that question of councillor Luxford Vaughan. That would be your next opportunity and the most appropriate place to place that question, I think. You can, of course, do it via email. You could obviously email councillor Luxford Vaughan, but then, of course, you wouldn't get your chance to ask that in public.
Well, I just hope that people around this table are listening. You know, we've got the reports here, this is the occasional, we've got a very good report on section one O six and on the number of houses we're doing. We're finding we're eleven percent social housing instead of thirty percent, which we were hoping for. We've got deficits all over the place. How are we going to solve it?
I mean, just to be clear, as Karen said, it's not as clear cut on that eleven percent because of some of the history and the fact that the thirty percent only got adopted in the local plan recently. So there is obviously a massive lead time and lag between the two. So just to make that point very clear for anyone that's listening back to this, it's not quite as clear cut as that. Is there any other points or questions? If not, we're asked to note the report, I do believe. So we're just going to note it. Thank you. Good, thank you, everybody. It was a good meeting. Well, my Christmas present to all of you is an early finish at nineteen eleven or seven eleven, whichever you prefer. And just thank you for making this committee up until this year a pleasure to chair. And obviously, we've got a few more months to go before we go back into the election silly season next year. And I wish you and your families all a very warm and safe Christmas. And all have safe journeys home this evening and thank you for your attendance.